Well, Santa, don't you take too long. Slave is playing that familiar song. Oh, I can't wait for Christmas Eve. When underneath my Christmas tree, there's presents wrapped in ribbons from me. So many gifts my eyes can barely see. Hanging up my mistletoe. It's a wonderland when it's off to snow. Oh, Merry Christmas. I hear Santa call. I said, oh, Merry Christmas.
Good morning, Birmingham, and happy holidays. This is the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is Tuesday, December 17th. This morning, our invocation will be delivered by Reverend Ennis Gaddis Jr., Associate Pastor of Mount Zion Missionary Baptist Church, Zion City here in Birmingham, Alabama. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilor Hunter Williams. If you're willing and able, please stand.
Let us pray. To heaven, Father, we thank you for the grace of this day, Father. We ask that you would bless this building, Father. Bless the leaders here, Father. Bless them with wisdom and understanding, Father. Bless every district, every neighborhood, Father. Bless, Father, as only you can, Father. Continue to bless and protect our schools and our children, Father. And, Father, we'll be able to say every day it's a good day when you know the Lord. It's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Good morning, Mr. Clerk. Could we please have a roll call?
Morning. Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Smithman.
Good morning.
Morning, Councilmember Tate.
Good morning.
Morning, Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. Council President Pro Tem Alexander.
Good morning, President.
Good morning, Council President O'Quinn.
Good morning. Council, the minutes are not ready for the October 1st, 2024 through December 10th, 2024 meetings. At this time, we'll have communications from Mayor Woodfin.
Like your sweater, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Very nice. I want one, a wear size, medium or large.
Hear that, Principal Hudson? You got his order?
Good morning to you, sir, and good morning to the entire council. Good to see everyone. And good to see the public today. Today is a great day to be a resident of the city of Birmingham. And it's even a better, amazing day to be at Thundering Herd. I have a few announcements today that will end with paying tribute to our 6A champions, but before I do that, I would like to invite Mr. Jordan Hills up, and that's Charlie Williams, with High Five Birmingham, to join me as he shares some information about a program that serves the residents of the city of Birmingham.
Oh, to the honorable mayor, Council President, member of the audience, good morning. I am Charlie L. Williams Jr., founder of High Five Birmingham, and each of you should receive one of our small bags right here, but small bag with a big heart. And inside that bag, you'll find one of our 100 Doors Initiative talks about it. High Five Birmingham was founded and known for rolling out the red carpets across K-38 schools here in the city of Birmingham, in the Birmingham area. And we're celebrating academic achievement by greeting kids in the morning time as they enter the school and giving them a high five, individuals from all around the community. Another one of our programs is our equine day camps, whereby we've partnered with Odyssey Care and Associates, licensed mental health therapists and clinicians, who utilize with the aid of horses, equine therapy to get our kids to understand their emotions and their mood swings and what have, and how to handle that and not turn it into conflict, conflict resolution. We partner with Sheriff Mark Petway every October, annual eerie spooky riders where our riders don costumes, riding the horse distributing candy. Our newest unveiling is the 100 Doors Program, whereby on January 20th, the MLK Day of Service, we will be painting 100 doors across the Birmingham area. And we will do this as a day of service project. Individuals can volunteer. And we have on the web page, I'll show you this right here in all social medias, where how you can get in touch with us. Again, it's High Five B-Ham on the social media page. With that being said, our sponsor, who is here to represent it by Sam South. Would you please introduce yourself, please?
Good morning to the President and the council. I'm Sam South. I'm Director of Communications and External Affairs for the BJCC. And I'm here this morning on behalf of our CEO, Mr. Tad Snyder. And we are a sponsor for the 100 Doors Program. And we are just excited to be a partner and to bring pride to our neighborhoods through painting of the doors and just to revitalize and bring excitement to the neighborhoods. So, thank you.
Again, thank you. You can go on our website. We have other activities that we carry on throughout the schools and so, and throughout the communities. And again, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Williamson.
Mr. President, thank you. At this time, we have a surprise joint presentation that I would like to ask Councilor Crystal Smithman to kick off first.
Is Lady D here? So, I think almost everybody knows Lady D, but she is the First Lady at More Than Conqueror's Faith Church. I have been knowing her since I was a little girl, and she started Virtue in 2005. And it's a women's empowerment nonprofit that aims at bringing awareness to health for all women, in particular breast cancer awareness. Back in 2005, her friend Robin was diagnosed with breast cancer awareness. At the time, as we know, especially with African-American women, it was more of like, hey, you have breast cancer, you're gonna die. And luckily now, almost 20 years later, thanks to organizations like Virtue Women, now know they can get mammograms, different resources. So, I just want to say thank you for all that you do, because you do so much more than that. But she was named as one of the 2024 Southerner.
Southerners of the Year?
Southerners of the Year. Make sure I got it right, which is an amazing magazine. It's very prestigious. And so, we just want to say we love you and we thank you, and we definitely want to give you your flowers because of this. So, I'll pass it back to Mayor Woodfin.
We're so honored to share this moment with you, Ms. Deidre Green, for what you do in community impact. And we wanted to love on you. So, in conjunction with what Councilor Smithman has just shared, in support of the city of Birmingham, we'd like to issue a proclamation for your impact in community as well as just share a brief, a brief portion out in its entirety of this proclamation. And I'll go ahead and give you an official copy before I read it. So, this belongs to you. But it states, whereas for over two decades, Ms. Deidre Green and Virtue, Inc. have made a profound and lasting impact on the Birmingham community by empowering individuals and raising critical awareness around women's health, particularly breast cancer. And whereas Virtue's, Inc.'s partnerships with organizations such as Ascension St. Vincent's Hospital, UAB Kirkland's Clinic, and the NFL's My Calls My Cleats Program have broadened the conversation on early detection and importance of health awareness. Whereas Ms. Green's exceptional leadership and the dedication of Virtue, Inc. over the past 19 years have shaped the health and well-being of countless individuals in the Birmingham community, earning her national recognition as one of Southern Living's magazines, 2024 Southerners of the Year. Now therefore, I, Randall L. Woodfin, Mayor of the city of Birmingham, along with the Birmingham City Council and Councilor Crystal Smithman, do hereby proclaim September 20th, 2025 as Virtue, Inc. Day and in the city of Birmingham, and also encourage all residents of Birmingham to join in celebrating Virtue, Inc. and its extraordinary contributions to our community. Thank you so much. And we would like you to say thank you.
Wow. What he say to these things. Where I come from, to God be the glory for all of the things that he's done. None of me, all of him. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Crystal. Council, Chris, this is my baby. Councilor Crystal Smithman and to the council itself and board. I feel like I'm at home today. I'm an A.H. Parker High School alumnus. And somewhere in there, my picture's on the wall because I was Miss A.H. Parker High School some many, many years ago. So, congratulations to you guys. And I stand here as a testament to you of what the Lord can do and what just keeping your nose to the grind can do. Maybe one day, one of you will be standing here before the council and the mayor of your day and saying thank you for the works that you've done. My husband stands beside me, Pastor Steve Green. I couldn't do any of this without him and some of my board members. But again, thank you guys so much. What an honor, what a privilege, what a pleasure. Just deeply humble. Thank you so much.
What's the word?
The word.
Man, whatever, man. What's the word?
The word.
I think that deserves a three-peat, Mr. President. What's the word?
The word.
At this time, it is my true honor to welcome Parker High School Thundering Herd Coach Frank Warren, Principal Darrell Hudson, and of course, the champions and all others to the podium, including Dr. Darrell O'Quinn, President of the Birmingham City Council, who represents District 5 and Parker High School, and James Sullivan, school board member, who represents Parker High School, Mary Bohm, and any other school members. If everyone could come to the podium as we take in this moment, continued celebrations from two Fridays ago in the freezing cold as you all just beat the brakes off Saraland, that's all. But we are so honored to have this moment. At this time, I would like to ask President Dr. Darrell O'Quinn, who also represents District 5 and Parker High School, to go first.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me just first start out by saying that we are extremely proud of you all. We know that you have worked very hard for this, and congratulations. So, we have a resolution on behalf of the Birmingham City Council with the mayor concurring. And I'll just read a little portion of this, but this is for you all in recognition of your accomplishment. Whereas it is the proud honor of this legislative body to celebrate this historic victory of A.H. Parker High School's talented football team, the Thundering Herd, who triumphed over rival team Saraland 28 to 17 in the Class A, the Class 6A championship game at Birmingham's Protective Stadium on December 6th, 2024, earning their first state title win. And whereas, following a hair's breadth loss by two points at Legion Field 44 years prior, Parker worked diligently since June to achieve their goal, devoting countless hours to honing their skills, all in the name of preparing their school, their school. Parents and teachers alike were beaming with pride at the accomplishment of these dedicated young players. And it goes on for a few more paragraphs, but we'll just cut to the chase. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city, that the council of the city of Birmingham, with Mayor Randall L. Woodfin concurring, pauses in its deliberations to salute and congratulate the A.H. Parker High School football team on a winning 2024 season and an outstanding victory in the Class 6A championship game. We wish them continued success in the, in the future. Adopted the 16th day of December, 2004, and recommended, at the recommendation of City Council President Darrell B. O'Quinn. So, make a motion for unanimous consent for the resolution.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
All right. And now the motion on the resolution.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. And let me present this to Coach Warren and Principal Hudson. There you go.
Dr. O'Quinn, please don't go anywhere at council. We're coming to you in a minute. I know you got a lot to say. I want to jump in of a few more speakers, and then we'll open it up for your remarks, if you don't mind. Let me, let me start by reading a portion of the proclamation first. And Coach, I'll present this to you, and I'll read a portion of this out loud for everyone to hear. And it states, whereas Coach Warren achieved his own historic milestone by securing his 50th career win in just five seasons, becoming the fastest coach in Parker High School history to reach this remarkable achievement. And whereas the Thundering Herd's success this season reflects their athletic talent and their ability to inspire, as six players will graduate early this month, leaving a legacy of leadership, hard work, that sets a standard for future generations. And whereas Parker High School's football program has solidified its reputation as a true powerhouse with more than 75 Division One schools actively recruiting its student athletes. Big deal, Coach. Further improving the impact and reach of the exceptional, of this exceptional program. And whereas the Parker High School football team has brought pride, unity, and inspiration to the city of Birmingham through their sportsmanship, dedication, and unshakable spirit. Now therefore, I, Randall L. Woodfin, Mayor of the city of Birmingham, along with the Birmingham City Council, do hereby declare December 17th, 2024, the A.H. Parker High School Thundering Herd Day. For its groundbreaking win, and encourage all citizens to celebrate this historic achievement, to honor the team, coaches, leadership, and continue to support the bright future of Parker High School. As on a personal note, I want to thank Principal Hudson, who I've had an extensive relationship with for more than a decade. Coach Warren to you and your coaches, to your student athletes for their success this year. What an amazing ride. Your entire city is proud of all of you all, young men. We could not be more proud of you, and we just want to wish you continued success for those returning next year and those going to the next level. Continued success for y'all as well. We'll be rooting for you each and every step of the way. With that, what I want to do, council, if it's okay with you, is have James Sullivan, who represents District 5 on the school board, to come up. Then let him introduce his principal, and then allow his principal to introduce their coach.
I see you on the spot again, but it's okay. I think I've congratulated the football team enough. It's been an honor. But congratulations again. It's been an honor to be a part of history. You know, I know we didn't quite get there last year, but it takes a lot of grit to get back and come back to next year to do it all over again. So, again, congratulations. We're proud of you. I speak on behalf of the board as well. And let's, let's get another one next year. Principal Hudson?
Thank you, Board Member Sullivan. Good morning. It gives me great pleasure to serve as the 10th principal of the historic A.H. Parker High School. And May, we will be celebrating 125 years. And I am so proud of these young men and coaches that stand behind me. This is our first football championship in 125 years. The first high school for four, first four-year high school in Birmingham for African-Americans. And not only do we have football players, we have scholar athletes. 24 of the young men that stand behind me have a cumulative GPA of 3.5 or higher. So, not only do they excel on the field, but they excel in the classroom as well. And we have had just an amazing season, 14 and 1. Had the opportunity to have a national platform, and I just want to take this opportunity to thank the city of Birmingham for everything they did for us in the Carleton game, which was our only loss. We beat Mountain Brook twice. Hooga wanted to play us for homecoming. And we beat Homewood, so we have a lot to brag on. And we are now ranked the number one high school in the state of Alabama. So, I think that deserves a round of applause. So, without further ado, I want to bring Coach Warren. He had me a little nervous when he went live, and I was on the bus with him. And I want to thank the mayor and everyone who had the lights purple here at City Hall. We was leaving Protective Stadium. The lights were purple under the, under the Vadox. And he made the statement that this is not for Princeton. This is for A.H. Parker High School. So, I told him, you know, we might need to go ahead and not go live. Just go ahead and kill that. But I'm extremely proud of the job that he has done and his coaches. And not only do we want to win each and every game, but we want our young men to win in a game of life. So, without further ado, Coach Frank Warren, A.H. Parker High School head football coach.
First of all, I want to say thank to everybody on the board, to the mayor, to Chief of Staff, my guy, Mr. Sparks, Mr. O'Quinn. First, I want to go on to God, put me in this position to lead these young men into something they never did before in the city of Parker, Birmingham City. And I just wanted to know that this group always going to have a special place in my heart. And also to my coaches, they don't get enough credit. They work hard and tirelessly. They give up their days to work hard for other people, kids, but we love these kids just like our own. And that people know that is, you don't have to leave Birmingham City to be special. You can do it right here at home. And we don't plan on stopping no time soon. And I'm not trying to be cocky about it, but I always speak word, manifest stuff over my life. And these guys going to be legends. They are legends and legendary. We spoke that at the beginning of the year. And I always want to give a shout out to Principal Hudson to give me the opportunity to lead these young men and Athletic Director Tyrus Moss and Athletic Director Harry Pope and Dr. Sullivan. So, I really appreciate y'all, everything y'all did for us for the ESPN game. And also, we ranked nationally 31st, can't forget that. We're number one in Alabama. We also ranked in the nation for the herd.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We are all excited for you all to be here with us today. I'm just going to start down the road because I'm sure everyone has something they'd like to say. So, Councilor Moore, would you like to start?
Oh, thank you, Madam Pro Tem. Now, look, listen, I just, number one, want to say congratulations to each and every one of you. I know that this is a moment that none of you will ever forget. I'm pretty sure, you know, that night that you had an opportunity to win the championship was one of the most special moments because it wasn't just about the trophy. It was about everything that led up to that moment. The fact that, you know, you and your brothers are fighting on this field at practice, you know, getting better each and every day and throughout the time, all the way up until that championship. And so, I pray that you all take those moments, you take those times of diligence, those, those examples that you've learned, those lessons that you've learned in this time, and you apply those very same things to life. There's very few things that you will be able to accomplish, great things like this by yourself, right? You need a coach, somebody that's gonna, you know, hold you accountable, push you in the right direction. You need some brothers that can stand with you and tell you, hey, look, we gonna stay on track, and this is what we came to do. And you need to just have that tenacity and grit. And so, I pray that you all continue to have other championships in your life. All right?
Thank you. We'll keep on down, everyone.
Well, I know that y'all are proud of yourselves, but you have brought pride to all of us, those of us who couldn't hold a football, much less do anything with it. I want to say how proud you've made us all of not only you, but our city. You know, we hadn't won a championship in all those years, and here we are, and it's you. Could have been somebody else, but it's you. And when you get to be my age, you are going to look back on this, this accomplishment with such pride. You know, look what I did. When you have grandchildren and great-grandchildren, you can tell them the story and you can show them the pictures. And for those of you who've got the grades, now, I'm really proud of you because I can't imagine getting your grades and being on a championship football team. So, I just want to say congratulations and just savor this because, you know, it doesn't happen to too many people. So, you're some of the fortunate ones. So, God bless you.
Thank you. Councilor Smithman?
Thank you, ma'am Pro Tem. I just want to say I am so proud of you all. I didn't go to Parker. I went to Ramsey, but just as a part. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute now. I just, I just said where I was from. I ain't saying nothing about Ramsey, dang. I can't even say my school name. I was going to give Birmingham City Schools a compliment that, you know, our school system in general, it's like a Cinderella story. We've always done so much with less because, you know, Birmingham City Schools, some schools don't have a field. Sometimes you barely have a field, you know, and the over, I'm just going to say, the over a mountain schools have everything, yet y'all beat them twice. So, y'all really, I was really proud of y'all because y'all really put on for Birmingham. And just as a former athlete, I didn't make it to state my major like right before state my senior year, and that's a big accomplishment. And to keep your grades up and to qualify to go to college because, what is it, like six of you all are going to D1 schools? That's a big deal, honestly, because there are a lot of athletes who are good enough to go to D1, but they don't qualify a coach because they don't have the grades. And so, I want to thank you to the coaches because with everything that's going on in the city, the fact that you're keeping these young men focused on football and keeping them out of trouble, I really want to commend you for that. So, I'm proud of you all. I can't wait for the parade, and I hope we're going to see you back here next year celebrating you all. Thank you.
Councilor Tate?
You kicked it over to me, Madam Pro Tem. Thank you. Congratulations, young men. I'm super proud of you all. I had an opportunity to come with my friend, Benita Forrier. You guys know her as Nana. Called and said, where you at? I need you to come by. So, it was good to come by the school, Coach Warren. Sir, just really want to congratulate you. Got a lot of history with your mom, Ms. Deidre Warren. Remember your, I don't know if Frank is your uncle, cousin, but that jersey was in the bleed red Phillips High School case in, in school. But today, we celebrating Parker. Look at Coach, Principal Hudson. I'm talking about Parker today, sir. So, all roads lead down Richard Aronson Boulevard to the Thundering Herd. Mr. Tim Merritt, got a lot of history with your aunt Diane, the Lord, your father, Tim. Mr. Nahim, going to Oregon. So, you guys continue to represent Birmingham well, letting people know that, you know, it is some good history, good stock that come out of Birmingham. As my colleagues have said, you guys will remember this for the rest of your life. Coach, you stand on the shoulders of giants of legacy that you will continue to leave behind. Principal Hudson, super excited for you being the 11th principal, also capturing this, this, this win and just a legacy that you all can go back and look on and, and be proud of. But again, I'm super proud of you. As my colleagues have said, we going to continue to pray for you and bid you farewell. When I think about a song, Hezekiah Walker, the best is yet to come. You're just beginning, but we going to keep on supporting you and rooting you from afar. So, congratulations, peace and love and blessings.
Thank you. Councilor Williams?
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem. Guys, you know, I think that, that at this point, we're kind of echoing each other, but I want to, to really impress upon you guys what, how proud that you have made the entire city of Birmingham, not this mayor, not this council, but really the entire city because you guys are the state championship winners. And, you know, Birmingham gets some good press and we get some bad press. And I want to thank each and every one of you for being part of that good press. We're all proud of you guys. Y'all are doing some great things. Especially proud of you guys that have the GPA. Your coach and principal mentioned. Saw some of you guys laughing at the GPA comments. Y'all get your grades, the laughing guys, y'all get your grades up. But, but congratulations. Y'all have made us all proud. And thank you very much for being exemplary young men and being professionals in, in what you do.
Thank you. Thank you, I'll finish this out, I'm just so excited. As Counselor Williams said, I think we've all echoed our pride and our excitement for having you here today. I want to start with you, Principal Hudson. Um, as you know, we've had a long history, I was very excited to be a part. I think Mayor Whitman and I were on the school board when you were appointed principal, so um, you've done an excellent job. I just want to go and uh be sure that the public understands the role that a principal plays and the support and the administration. It has been said that you followed, you allowed the process to take care of itself. And as administrator, you have faith in your athletic director and your coach. And I want to thank you for charging and moving forward that way as an administrator. Coach Warren, very excited for you. I know um, you're, as you said, you were sort of modest, I know your better half has very big ties with um Parker. I know that her mother graduated from Parker, so very excited for you. For the, uh, of the players, I just have to tell you, I am so excited for you. It was so much pride being in that stadium, watching you run up and down that field. You just, it was cold, but it was very, very exciting. I understand that you beat two undefeated teams to get here, is that correct? And like you said, you whipped them up all across the city and across this region. So thank you so much again, immense pride. For the parents, I see Mr. Holt over there, I know he's a proud parent and other parents in the room. We know that it didn't start here today and it didn't start with that game on December sixth. A lot of you probably came up through the um, uh, youth programs, your parents spent a lot of time and effort to be with you. And so we thank you for your diligence. As Mrs. Abbott said, for the scholar athletes, we're just excited for the grades that you've attained and what's going to happen for you. So take this moment in, soak it in, I hope your day is just a wonderful day. Um, majority of us will not be there with you for the parade, but thank you Mayor Whitman, the city is going to show out today. And those purple and white lights, I was just so excited. I do have to say, I wouldn't be here if my mom and dad hadn't met at Parker High School, alright, alright, alright? I also have, so, and my, and so my uh sister and my son, my son actually played football for Parker and is a Parker graduate. They were not the winning team that you all are, but it's just so much excitement for me. So congratulations, congratulations, I'll turn it back over, thank you.
I just want to say, thank y'all.
And I would be remiss if I didn't recognize Board Member Bone, who's here with us today, along with our Chief of Staff, Dr. Lamar, and our Instruction Superintendent, uh, Dr. Drake in the back. So on behalf of the Thundering Herd and the faculty and staff at H. Parker High School, I want to just take this opportunity again to thank you for all that you have done for H. Parker High School and all that you will do for the Thundering Herd, go herd.
Thank you, I know we don't have a lot of time, but Mayor Whitman, we just wanted, we wanted to know if just one student could just say something and uh express their excitement and their gratitude for today. I think we have one young man that wants to say something, come on.
I need to do a disclaimer now, some of them are early graduates, but I, I'm still the principal.
I just want to thank all of y'all for having us here today, we are very grateful and uh blessed. Uh, I would just want to give a shout out to my teammates and my coaches for doing everything they've done for this program and the four years that I've been here. Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, for doing all that you do, painting the city purple and stuff, you know, that means a lot to us, you know. A lot of us come from nothing and saying something like this is motivation to keep doing better. And I just want to say thank all of y'all.
Tim, Tim, thank you for representing your, your teammates. It's hard to follow, I'll just simply say this, there are a lot of parents, a lot of parents that showed out this year for Parker. I want to thank all the parents of these student athletes, I want to thank the Parker alumni, um, who are a force to be reckoned with. And we gonna love on y'all some more in about two hours, so I'll see y'all soon. What's the word?
Ma'am Pro Tem, can we get, I want a purple sweater, can we have a purple size medium?
Nine.
Yeah, I really want, I'll pay for it, give me one. Well, all of us.
I know. I started to call them out. Yes, at this time, we will continue with our presentations, Dr. Quinn.
Alright, so while we're transitioning, uh, we're not, we're not done yet with our championship day. Transitioning in, we also have the Phillips Academy Football Team, who are the twenty twenty-four Birmingham City Middle School Football Champions. So also, we're, we're extremely proud of you guys also for your accomplishments. Maybe you uh, you guys, some of you guys will end up at Parker High School and winning a state championship in high school. So look forward to seeing you in the future. Uh, I want to welcome um, Coach Kelly to the mic to say a few words, Coach Kelly.
Good morning, everyone. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank these young men for the hard work and the dedication. Um, not only that, the hard work on the football field, but the hard work in the classrooms. I would like to thank all parents, also the coaches, on the community, the stakeholders. And not only that, uh, Phillips Academy School Administration. And I only thank you guys for allowing us to be here today, thank you.
So Principal Enzie isn't here with us today, right? This, but um, for all of you guys who could know Principal Enzie, he is extremely supportive of his scholars at his school. Um, and this is uh part of, you know, his work too, so wanted to give him a shout out. And thank you to all of the parents that support these students. Um, they certainly, you know, taking care of your academics is uh a challenge enough. But doing that and being part of an athletic team is, is um double the accomplishment. So again, congratulations and um, I have a, a letter here on behalf of the city council to present to you, recognizing you guys. And um, again, congratulations, alright?
Thank you, anyone have any comments, Counselor Smith?
Just saying, we're just as proud of you that we are a Parker, you know, it starts in middle school is what Madam Pro Tem says. So you work hard from middle school, go to high school, and then you all, same group of teammates, y'all can grow up together and play together and have your own state championship. And getting a championship in middle school is really hard too, so I'm proud of that and the grades. Because if you can survive middle school, you can survive high school. So uh, we're proud of you all and, you know, we wish you all the best.
Thank you, any other comments, Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Madam Pres, Pro Tem. Uh, congratulations Phillips Academy, I'm a proud graduate of Phillips High School. So congratulations, I'll keep soaring, your scholistic achievement, um, just congratulations, bringing home a championship in the, the middle school division. So Coach, congratulations to you and your whole coaching staff, the principal and um, the whole uh staff at Phillips High School. So thank you all.
Thank you very much, Counselor Moore.
Yeah, look, I'll just, you know, say this, just continue the trend, look, you, you all are already champions, keep that same culture going. Uh, it's a mindset that comes along with it. And so keep that same mindset as you transition into high school and beyond then, alright? So congratulations to you all.
Thank you very much, again, we are very excited to have you here today. Thank you President O'Quinn for bringing them and honoring them and uh making us aware of their accomplishments. Thank you so much, we're very proud of you.
Thank you, so we're going to go ahead and transition to the uh next, um, do we want to do introductions?
Sure.
Alright, quickly, you guys come up to the mic one at a time and be sure to speak clearly and into the mic and just introduce yourself, say what position you play.
My name is Trent Perkins, I play right guard, right tackle and nose guard.
My name is Corlin Perkins and I play DN.
My name is Kellen Richburg and I'm an athlete.
My name is Zaylan Berry and I play defensive line and offensive line.
My name is Amari Gladdy, I'm in eighth grade, play wide receiver.
My name is Zane Callaway, I'm quarterback.
My name is Demetrius Wilber, I play corner.
My name is Carson Diller, I play receiver.
My name is Kenton Crawford, I play outside linebacker.
My name is Omar Fortune, I play middle linebacker.
My name is Rashad Williams.
Hello, my name is Rashad Williams, uh, I play everything.
My name is Amari Shraggers and I play running back.
My name is Kingston Reed and I play wide receiver and cornerback.
My name is Decorian Dixon and I play defensive end.
My name is Isaiah Jones, I play middle linebacker.
My name is Jason, I play center.
Well, I'm Coach Lynn, I was having the honor, I was had the honor to coach these guys. Um, I was a mental and physical trainer and DN O-line coach, so it's been a blessing to have these guys this year.
My name is Kyle Burrows, I play running back and linebacker.
My name is Dwayne Wade and I play cornerback and outside linebacker.
My name is John Elder, I play center.
My name is Kyrie Fields Hill and I play DN.
My name is Braden Taylor and I play O-line and D-line.
My name is King Stan and I play offensive guard.
My name is Elton Green the third and I play wide receiver and corner.
My name is John Gilbert and I play defensive back.
My name is Ken Lewis and I play right tackle.
My name is Jeremiah Miller and I play right.
My name is Kelvin Park, I play O-line, D-line and kicker.
My name is Cole Russ and I, I lift tackle.
My name is Kendrick English, I play defensive end.
My name is defensive tackle.
Alright, thank you guys. Alright, Counselor Moore, you're up.
Uh, if the representatives from H two O come up. So, let me see. Got two resolutions here today, but the first will uh be in recognition of Help to Others Foundation. Um, so this organization does a lot in our city and they're actually celebrating twenty years uh since they were founded in two thousand and four. Uh, and I'll let them come up and uh share a little information, but uh, we know that there are several families and households in our community and in our city that struggle with, you know, uh, water issues, whether because they need repairs to their homes, uh, because of leaks that take place, um, or whatever the case may be. Uh, but this organization has stood as a champion for those families and for those households. And so I'm going to give uh Ms. Jamiki Abaz uh an opportunity to come up and speak real quick before we go.
Thank you, Counselor Moore, um, good, good morning, everyone, thank you so much for having us here. Uh, the H two O Foundation again was founded in two thousand and four to support low-income families in the greater Birmingham community to ensure that they maintain their access to water. And so each year we provide more than six hundred households with financial and service assistance for minor plumbing repairs and water assistance. And when we look at that, really the, the individuals or households that we support are at thirty percent below the median income, which is around eighteen thousand dollars a year in their annual income to qualify for those programs. And I have to say, it does my heart good because as a former educator and as a former school counselor, we don't understand that sometimes not having water is also a barrier to our education and what our children face when they go to school every day. And so the work the H two O Foundation has done over the years is just to ensure that all of our families maintain their access to water. And we want to ensure that we partner and that we support those families and those households in our community. Because what we fail to realize is we may not need assistance, but our neighbor across the street may need assistance. So thank you so much. Yes, and so today we have uh two of our board members, Ms. Carolyn Newton and Ms. Connie Harris here to support us. We have a non uh member board and we are an independent nonprofit. Um, we also want to thank those council members who did support us this year for our twentieth anniversary celebration that allowed us to be able to give back to the communities. Even this year, we've served roughly around six hundred and thirty-five households, not including those individuals in the household. Um, that impacts all of those who need support. So again, thank you, Counselor Moore.
And so I'll read uh a brief uh selection from this, this resolution. Whereas it is a practice of the legislative body to recognize those, recognize those worthwhile institutions that prioritize the health and well-being of, of their community above monetary gains. With this sentiment in mind, the Council of the City of Birmingham is justly proud to shine a light on the good works of such, such an establishment, the Help to Others Foundation, a nonprofit organization that works to supply financial and plumbing repair assistance to eligible residents in the Birmingham area. Uh, now therefore be resolved that the City Council of Birmingham, uh, with Mayor, Mayor Randall L. Wood and concurrent, pauses in its deliberations to recognize and congratulate the Help to Others H two O Foundation and its humanitarian efforts to make water accessible to residents who might otherwise be unable to afford it. Uh, one last thing that I'll say too, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, but there's also an opportunity for residents in our city to donate to this opport, or to this nonprofit organization as well. So uh, as was stated, you may not be somebody who is in need of help, uh, however, you can help somebody in need, is that correct? And so make sure that you uh go to their website to find out exactly how to do that. So just want to say thank you all uh for helping me to recognize this organization. Uh, want to move for unanimous consent?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed?
Alright, move the resolution.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed?
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Pre, uh, Counselor Moore, what's their website? Is that on here?
H two O B Ham dot org.
Okay, thank you.
So H two O B Ham dot org, uh, and they also have folders for everybody to just share information about how many folks they've actually helped in our districts as well. Alright, so this last resolution was a, is a very special one to me. Uh, however, Santa Claus happened to not show up today. Of all, of all days, it's all good though. Uh, good brother Willie Jenkins, man, um, is he out in the crowd, I mean, not in the, in the hallway? There you go. Hey man, y'all clap it up for Willie Jenkins, man. What's up?
Alright now.
So um, I absolutely love Willie Jenkins. Uh, since I've been on this council, uh, one phone call that I know that I always receive is Mr. Willie Jenkins. He's going to let me know about any and everybody that has passed away, uh, which may not sound like a lot. But in times where families need somebody to reach out to them and to, you know, give them a resolution, like Willie Jenkins is going to fight uh on behalf of those families to make sure that people are remembered. Um, and so in this moment, we want to make sure that we remember and. And so, in this moment, we wanna make sure that we remember and honor you, alright?
Alright.
Because Mr. Willie Jenkins has a birthday coming up in, what, three days?
Yeah, on the Friday. It's Friday coming up.
Yeah, and you're gonna be 70 years old, correct?
Yeah, 70 years old.
Alright, so, look, oh, so, hold on just a second. So, I'm not gonna read the resolution, but if you all would, I would love to be able to say happy birthday to Mr. Willie Jenkins in advance, if y'all don't mind. Y'all good with that? Alright. One, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Mr. Jenkins. Happy birthday to you.
I'm gonna be at Applebee's this coming Friday, Applebee's on Old Iron Road, at 5 o'clock, celebrate my birthday. And I just want y'all to pray for one of my men of praise, his mother passed, and they're having a funeral Friday at 11 o'clock. I would like to get a letter for one of Roosevelt, his mother passed, and she used to come to church all the time, rehearse all the time. But, you know, the lawyer, lawyer went on, called her in, and I just wanted to leave the one letter for her. I got her information. Just one letter for her, for her going home. It's gonna be this coming Friday at 12 o'clock.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Well, I just, I wanna say thank you to you in front of the council and everybody else that's here today. We just wanted to honor you and tell you happy birthday. I wanna move for UC. Unanimous consent?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Move the item?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed?
Alright. I don't know if y'all have anything that y'all want to say.
We love you, Mr. Jenkins.
Yeah. Yeah.
Alright, thank y'all.
Thursday, 6 o'clock. Santa Claus will be there.
Patton Park. Alright, gotcha. Thank you. Mr. Clark, do we have any nominations to boards and agencies?
We did not receive any, sir.
Okay. At this time, I'll read our statement on conduct of business. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor request the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. Mr. Clark, could we please through, read through the items on our consent agenda?
Okay. Consent agenda starts on page two with items two, three, and four. Page three, we have items five, six, and seven on consent. Page four, we have items eight, nine, and 10 on consent. Skip over to page eight, item number 11 is on consent. Page nine, item 12 is on consent. Page 12, item 13 is on consent. Page 13, item 14 is on consent. Page 14, item number 15 is on consent. Page 15, item 16 is on consent. Page 17, items 17 and 18 are on consent. Page 20, item number 19 is on consent. Page 22, item 20 is on consent. Page 23, item 21 is on consent. Page 27, item 22 is on consent. Page 30, item number 23 is on consent. Page 31, item 24 is on consent. Page 35, items 25, 26, and 27 are on consent. Page 36, items 28, 29, and 30 are on consent. Then we skip over to page 38, and we have items 35, 36, and 37 on consent. Page 39, items 38 and 39 are on consent. Page 40, items 41, I mean, sorry, items 40, 41, and 42 are on consent. Page 41, items 43, 44, and 45 are on consent. Page 42, items 46, 47, and 48 are on consent. Page 43, items 49, 50, and 51 are on consent. Page 44, items 52, 53, and 54 are on consent. Page 45, items 55, 56, and 57 are on consent. Please note that on item number 57, the attachment that you have in your packet, it should say Publix and not Target. I think your attachment says Target. It should say Publix.
Mr. Clark, could you repeat that?
Item 57, your attachment in your packet that you received on Friday, it says Target, and then but it should say Publix.
Okay. Got it.
Page 46, we have items 58, 59, 60, 61, and 62 on consent. Page 47, we have items 63, 64, 66, and 68 on consent. Please note that items 65 and 67 are to be withdrawn per planning and engineering permit. Page 48, we have items 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, and 74 on consent. Page 49, we have items 75, 76, 77, 78, 79, and 80 on consent. Page 50, we have items 81, 82, 83, 84, 85, and 86 on consent. Please note that on item number 86, that address should be 608 and not 601. Should be 608 on item number 86. Page 51, we have items 87, 88, 89, 90, 91, and 92 on consent. Page 52, we have items 93, 94, and 95 on consent. Page 53, we have items 96 and 97 on consent. Page 54, we have items 98, 99, and 100 on consent. Page 55, we have items 101 and 103 on consent. Page 56, we have items 104, 105, and 106 on consent. Please note that on item 105, it should be Stivers Ford instead of Ingram Equipment Company. That's Stivers Ford instead of Ingram's Equipment Company. Page 57, you have, we have items 107, 108, 109, 110, 111, and 112 on consent. And you should have gotten a corrected item for item 110, making the correction for my travel, which is item 110. It should have been passed out to the counselors. Page 58, we have items 113, 114, 115, 116, 117, and 118 on consent. Page 59, we have items 119, 120, 121, 122, 123, and 124 on consent. Page 16, we have items 125, 126, 127, 128, 129, and 130 on consent. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Alright. Do any members of the council wish to add or remove an item from the consent agenda? Councilmore?
Yes, I don't wish to remove the items from consent, but item 54 as well as item 55 wanted to have it added that the funding source is District 4, Arpa Dollars.
Okay. 54 on page 44 and...
And item 55.
55 on page 45. Okay. Do any other members of council wish to add or remove an item from the consent agenda? Councilor Abbott?
I don't wanna remove anything, but we have all of these budget items on here. And I was just wondering when we would get the answers to our budget questions.
I know that Chief Mitchell has responded to at least some of the questions. The ones that I was aware of had that had been announced, but...
Yeah, I think our only question was that we wanted to know which items, you know, each department has a presentation at the beginning asking for money for different things, and we wanted to know which items were granted, agreed to by the administration, and which ones were rejected.
Please forgive me, Ms. Abbott. I will get that answer for you before today is over.
Okay. I just wanted to know. I've wanted to know for 23 years and nobody's ever answered, so I'm excited that I'm gonna, this mayor's going to answer.
Yes, ma'am. Just to verify, you want, each department has a request for their budget. We recommend a budget to you, meaning from that budget request, things were either granted or denied. You wanna know both columns or you just wanna know what was denied?
Well, I wanna, I really wanna know what was granted.
Okay.
But knowing both would be good.
Okay.
You know, because some of them have long lists of things that they want to accomplish, and I know that everybody doesn't get everything they want. We just need to know what was approved and what was not approved so that we know what's gonna happen for the next year.
Mr. President, I'll make sure all of you all get it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, generally, those are items 113 through 129. All of those items are currently on the consent agenda.
And I don't wanna take them off. I just want to know. Inquiring minds want to know.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Alright.
Oh, and one other item. I did wanna take off item 46 on page 42.
Item 46. On page 42?
Yes. Just to hear a presentation on it.
Okay. Alright. We also have items two through 24 on the consent agenda. Those are public hearing items. Do any members of the public wish to remove any of those items from the consent agenda? Yes, sir.
Tell him to come up where we can hear him.
Come up to the, to Mike and, and let us figure out which item. So, okay, this is item 85. It's not a public hearing item, so we're only referring to items two through 24.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'll remove item 85 from consent.
Alright. 85, item 85. Alright, that is item 85 on page 50, removed from the consent agenda. Okay. Don't we see anyone else? So, at this time, do we have a motion on the consent agenda? Alright, Mr. Clark, we're ready for the vote.
Alright. Councilor Smithman, Councilmore?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Alright. That consent agenda is approved. So, if you had an item that was on the consent agenda, your item was approved. And you're welcome to stay with us, but if you got other things to do, we won't mind if you guys exit. Alright, so, Mr. Clark, please call up item number one, and we would also like you to read the addendum item, item 131, at the same time.
Alright. Item one, a resolution relative to the application of AGJW LLC for the transfer of a lounge retail liquor class-one license to be used at the G-Spot 3912, Richard Erickson Jr. Boulevard, Birmingham, Alabama 35234, in the hearing of all supporters. You got the... And item 131, a resolution relative to the application of AGJW LLC for Division II dance permit to be used at the G-Spot 3912, Richard Erickson Jr. Boulevard, North Birmingham, Alabama 35203, in the hearing of all supporters.
Mr. Clark, I've just been informed that the applicant has withdrawn their application.
That is correct, Mr. President. I'm calling for item one and 131 to be withdrawn due to some research on some delinquent taxes.
Okay, well, okay, that's different from the applicant withdrawing their application. So, do you wanna make a motion to delay or send it back to the committee?
Make a motion to delay the item for two weeks and send it back to the committee.
Alright, so, motion to delay for two weeks with a second, Attorney King.
Just making sure the record was clear. The application was not withdrawn. It's just being delayed two weeks.
That's, that's correct. Alright, so, it's been motioned in second and...
How, how many weeks?
Two weeks.
Okay.
Two weeks, Mr. Clark.
Who made the second? I'm sorry.
Councilor Smithman.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Alright, so that item is delayed.
Those two items, correct?
Okay. I think our next item is, yeah, that's, that was item number one and the addendum item number 131, both delayed two weeks.
31, I think, next item?
Yes, 31.
Alright, item 31. In ordinance pursuant to section 11-102-1, Code of Alabama authorizing the mayor to enter into an interlocal cooperation agreement between the City of Birmingham and Jefferson County for auto photography and planometric mapping services, cost-sharing for three years, and an amount not to exceed $99,427.65 payable in equal annual installments of $33,142.55 in exchange for the county providing the city with copy of received products as delivered for, per any GIS consortium projects. This is an item of permanent operation. I need UC to pass it today.
Second.
So, we have Counselor Williams and Counselor Smithman. Councilmember Abbott for UC.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore? Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Council President Protem Alexander?
Aye.
And Council President Oakley.
Aye.
Alright, motion on the item, please.
Second.
Our item is before you.
Alright, questions on this item? Seeing none, we're ready for the vote.
Okay. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Alright. Item 31 is approved.
Item 32.
Item 32.
In ordinance adding section 2-4-17 to the title to General Government, Chapter 4, Officers and Employees, Article 8, General Provisions of the General Code of the City of Birmingham, 1980, establishing paid mental health observance leave for all full-time classified employees of the Birmingham Police Department, holding a position of police officer at any rank, corrections officer at any rank, or police recruit. This is again an item of permanent operation. I need UC to pass it today. Okay.
Motion by Williams and seconded by Protem Alexander.
Alexander, okay. For UC, Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore? Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Protem Alexander?
Aye.
Council President Oakley.
Alright.
Motion on the item? Alright, item is before you.
Alright. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, we're ready for the vote.
I didn't say anything yet. Okay. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Council Protem Alexander?
Aye.
Council President Oakley.
Alright. That item is approved.
And you should note that, that both of those items are public safety recommendations for 32 and 33 and 34.
Okay. Alright. Item 33?
Alright, item 33. In ordinance pursuant to Act 1969-916 of the Acts of Alabama, authorize the mayor to execute an interlocal cooperative agreement for the term of not more than three years, beginning January the 1st, 2025, and ending December the 31st, 2027, between the Transportation Security Administration and the City of Birmingham, Birmingham for its Police Department, for participation by the Birmingham Police Department in the TSA National Explosives Detection K-9 Team Program. The city will provide TSA-certified K-9 teams to participate in the program, and TSA will provide training and reimbursement of the city's costs, and authorize the mayor to execute all documents necessary to accomplish the purpose of the agreement. This is also an item of permanent operation. I need UC to pass it.
Motion for UC?
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Council Protim Alexander?
Aye.
Council President O'Quinn?
Aye.
All right, motion on the item?
Motion on the item.
Second.
All righty, item is before you.
All right, any discussion on this item? Seeing none, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, item thirty-three is approved, item thirty-four?
Item thirty-four, an ordinance pursuant to Act number nineteen sixty-nine dash nine sixteen of the Acts of Alabama, authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal cooperative agreement between the city of Birmingham and the United States Immigration and Customs Enforcement for the purpose of ICE reimbursing the city for costs incurred due to the Birmingham Police Department providing resources to ICE's Homeland Security Investigations Joint Operation Task Force. Neither party shall assume any risk or future liability or any future responsibility for any of the property of the party or for the actions of any employee or officer of the other party. No party to the contract shall have any power to incur in debt, which will shall become the responsibility of any other contracting party except and specifically authorized in the agreement. The term of the agreement should not exceed a period of three years from its effective date and authorize the mayor and/or the chief of police to execute any additional documents necessary to accomplish the purposes of the agreement. This is again an item of permanent operation, I need UC to pass it today.
Second.
Okay, um, let's see, Williams, Smithman, Councilmember Abbott?
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember Abbott, Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Smithman?
Aye.
Councilmember Tate?
Aye.
Council, uh, Member Williams?
Aye.
Council President Protim Alexander?
Aye.
Council President O'Quinn?
Aye.
All right, item is before you.
Okay, um, Council Rabbit?
Yeah, I wanted to ask if, um, if the upcoming administration decides to round up all the people in America who are not here legally, will our people, by virtue of this agreement, be involved in doing that?
Council Rabbit, I can answer that question. So, um, I had the same question. So I actually read the agreement, um, in our detail, and it specifies that, um, these off, officers will be excluded from that activity.
Good, I fell asleep before I finished it.
Okay.
And, um, and so I thought I'd better ask this morning.
And Councilor Abbott, I raised that question during public safety. That was the first thing that I said in Public Safety Committee meeting. Yeah, making sure that we're not targeting, targeting our Hispanic community.
Well, I don't want to target anybody, but I also don't want to use our police department up since it's so short.
Correct.
And since we don't see very many police cars in our neighborhoods anymore, I certainly don't want them off helping those guys. So thank you.
All right.
Ma'am.
I believe we're ready for the vote now.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, item thirty-four is approved. Next item, I believe, is item forty-six.
Forty-six. Item forty-six, a resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a U.S. Department of Commerce, Economic Development Administration in distress area, recompete pilot program of subaward agreement with the Birmingham Jefferson County Transit Authority, under which the Birmingham Jefferson County Transit Authority will establish and implement consolidation and expansion of twenty-three North Birmingham and forty Fairmont bus services, scaling the Birmingham on-demand micro-transit service to connect service area residents to high-volume transit routes, job sites, and essential services through two contiguous micro-transit zones in North Birmingham and Pratt-Enslie as part of the city of Birmingham's Connect Birmingham pursuant to Amendment Number seven seventy-two in terms of the grant from the U.S. Department of Commerce, Economic Development Administration, and amount not to exceed one million dollars for a term to end on or before September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-nine. Motion, please.
Move the item.
Second.
Item is before you.
All right, Council Rabbit?
Yeah, and I just took the sauce, so someone could kind of explain what we're doing here and, and how this area was chosen to do it in.
Good morning, um, Mr. President, again, to your colleague's question from Ms. Abbott, we'll have Sarah McMillan of IEO come up, um, to answer your question. Actually, can you re, repeat their question, please?
Yeah, the question is just, um, you know, kind of what are we doing here? And how was this, these two, how were these two routes chosen over all the other routes that there are?
Press the, press the button right there in front of you. There you go.
Thank you, first time, no, I'm joking. Good morning, Sarah McMillan, I serve as Deputy Director of Workforce and Talent Development within the Department of Innovation and Economic Opportunity. And this agreement before you is one of the five subawarty agreements that we're pushing through with the Recompete Grant. So the reason that these routes were chosen was that this is part of a four-community kind of footprint that we are working with, with Recompete. And so that twenty-million-dollar investment, if you remember, that was, um, a twenty-million-dollar grant that we received from the EDA to, um, essentially move people into good jobs. It was all around, uh, low, low, I'm sorry, low workforce participation among prime-age working adults. And so we looked across the city, and we chose four Birmingham communities, North Birmingham, Northside, Smithfield, and Pratt. And so those two particular routes that we're focused on, um, within this agreement, were identified among, um, that service area to be a big transportation gap that was prohibiting workers from being able to get to work.
Gotcha, so these are, this, these are neighborhoods with a low participation rate in work. And they have a lot of people who are the right age, who should be working, so we're trying to help them get to work.
That's exactly right.
Somewhere, okay, thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Um, so, uh, Counsel Williams, go ahead.
Thank you, so, the, so I was under, I, I think I'm confused because I thought that the cities, this is what we call VIA, right? This is VIA?
Yes, that's part of it.
So I thought that VIA was, our VIA was not with the BJCTA. I thought our VIA was being operated through the city of Birmingham.
Yes, and part of this too, and I probably should have just started at the top, that this is, like, there's four programs within Recompete. Some of them are focused on jobs, getting people into jobs, and then a lot of them are focused on barrier elimination. And so we're working with BJCTA as part of their, um, seventy-thirty plan to expand micro-transit. Currently, the VIA that we're talking about, the city does run, and this is part of a long-term plan for VIA to, or, so, and not necessarily VIA, but a micro-transit provider for BJCTA to also have a relationship with a micro-transit provider to be able to expand service into an area in Birmingham that's currently not being served by VIA.
So...
Just to add, so, leadership at BJCTA is very bullish on micro-transit. So I think also separating apart from what the city's doing, they're looking to figure out how to incorporate, they've been talking about this for two years, how to incorporate micro-transit into their fleet.
Well, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, I'm very disappointed in the leadership of the BJCTA for what, what's happening with micro-transit. I really like what the city has been able to do, but I just learned that the BJCTA as a region is not letting micro-transit pass municipal boundaries, which really defeats the entire purpose of micro-transit. It's extremely frustrating to hear that that's the position that they've taken. And it really creates barriers for everybody that could be utilizing a system that is easily fixed. I think that this grant, Mr. Mayor, is great. I just want to make sure that, that those that will be utilizing this VIA have what is the most sensible way of getting from point A to B, meaning that, for example, we have an east side, we have a west side zone in VIA, and now it sounds like we're gonna have a north zone in VIA, if I'm using the correct language. You know, I think it's crazy that you can't get from one zone to the other without taking, without getting off and taking a bus. But I think it's even crazier that if you have employment in another municipality that is, that has VIA, the BJCTA is blocking them from going from the city of Birmingham to that municipality, even though that municipality, our neighboring municipalities, are paying for that service. And it is infuriating to hear that those people that are utilizing that service could be going directly from wherever their pickup spot is to their place of employment and back. But instead of being able to do that with ease, we're causing another barrier to their employment by making them jump on and off a bunch of different routes. So what could be a ten-minute commute and is being paid for by other municipalities, all of a sudden is a one-and-a-half-hour commute. And I am passionate about how nonsensible that is for those people that are de, depending on this for either, you know, education, work, medical, whatever. They're depending on it, and I think that the BJCTA needs to do a better job of stop putting municipal boundaries in place when it comes to VIA.
This, Counsel Williams, we're the messengers.
Oh, no, I, that's why I don't even like y'all responding to it, and that's why I'm saying the BJCTA is my problem.
May I make a suggestion? Uh, it's just a suggestion, you don't have to take it. But at the chairman's next committee meeting, I would suggest that third party come before you all, if your schedule permits, which I hope it does, for you to continue to address that and or put it in question form, why is it that way? Because I actually have limited information on what you just shared, you're...
I found out about it last, I found about it last week, you know, when, when all the city councils get together and said, well, they're blocking people from coming in and out of our city that want to work here.
Yes, sir.
All right, noted. Other, any other questions on this item? All right, we're ready for the vote.
Okay, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Uh, item is approved. The next item is item eighty-five, I believe.
That's correct. Item eighty-five, a resolution determining that the building or structure located at five fourteen nineteenth Street, also known as five twenty-six nineteenth Street, Enslie, Birmingham, three five two one eight, to be unsafe, a public nuisance, and direct that it be demolished.
All right, move the item.
Second.
All right, discussion on this item? Could we, could we, uh, yeah, this is not a public hearing, this is not a public hearing.
Should we delay it, maybe, delay it?
Mr. President, adhering to Counsel J.T. Moore's taking it off, the mayor's office cannot speak to this item, it's something that, um, we're not in or unaware of. However, PEP is here, if you would like PEP to speak to it.
Yes, please.
They can't.
And, uh, also note, counselors, that we have a, um, some pictures of the property that we can share with you up here on the dais. But yes, Mayor, if you would have PEP come and speak, I'd appreciate it. And again, sir, this is not a public hearing.
I haven't said that. Yeah, we can. So, uh...
So, yeah.
Counsel President, uh, I'd love to refer this to, uh, the Community Development Committee, um, for this to be seen by us.
Okay, so that's, your motion is to refer this back to the Community Development Committee?
I'll second it.
Because this didn't come to Community Development Committee.
So, whoops.